It is seven AM, May twelfth. It's a beautiful morning out there. Good morning, everyone. We'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Roll call, please.
Here, here.
Here.
Here. Can you hear me?
You have nine minutes. Fish.
There.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First discussion item this morning is the Rolling Meadows Stormwater Agreement. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you, your honor, and good members as well. Good morning. Probably best to turn to this exhibit here. The future owners of Lot Two located in Rolling Meadows Plate, which is shown on the screen, Lot Two being to the west, Lot One being to the north. That's shown there. Is requesting to de-in existing stormwater pond, which is located on Outlot A to the city. This land conveyance could be facilitated by a quick clean deed. So if acceptable, the existing and future owners of Lot One and Two will be required to enter into a stormwater pond agreement with the city. In general, similar to past arrangements in a recent agreement that came before the council just recently, the existing owners of Lot One and Two will assume full responsibility of the regular maintenance of the pond. Regular maintenance being defined as mowing, picking up litter, things of that nature. The city will be responsible for the ongoing monitoring and necessary repairs to collect sediment removals and dispose of it properly to improve the water quality as intended for the stormwater ponds. The existing and future owners have consented to the city's conditions thus far that we've dealt with right now. Additionally, in order to complete this arrangement, the owner of Lot One will dedicate to the city a twenty-foot-wide ingress egress ingress and egress easement along the south side of the entire length of their Lot One property. This will provide access to this pond in Outlot A. So at this time, your honor, the recommendation is to accept a conveyance of stormwater pond Outlot A to the city contingent on the execution of the following two recommendations. Authorize city engineer and city attorney to prepare the stormwater pond maintenance agreement and authorize myself and a city attorney to prepare the necessary documentation for the ingress egress to allow the city to access Outlot A. So at this time, I'll just open up any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian. If anyone has any questions, city engineer, go ahead, Scott.
The map shows that there's already an egress easement on the south side of that. So why do we need one on the north side as well?
Yes, that that is not, that is a utility easement, but as constructed with the pond feature, that is a natural drainage trail that is part of the pond. So if we were to access it through that particular portion, we'd incur a lot of significant needs just because it's naturally inundative water quite a bit, so.
Is there any other questions we could? Yeah.
Where is? I'm confused on the ingress egress area. That's going to be on the lakeside?
Yes, Lot One being like, it's undeveloped currently right now, I believe. So yes, it's on the north, north side.
And they will be mowing all around that pond?
No, they're required to both parties, whoever the arrangement is.
Because I'm all around it now.
And I'm sure they'll certainly allow it if you want to continue.
So they will, they will then spray and and all that kind of stuff in there because there is a big patch of dandelions and thistles in there.
That would be considered part of the regular maintenance, turf maintenance.
Yeah, Scott.
What's put the advantage?
Just one second, one second, Anthony. Go ahead, Scott.
Is there a fence or would it be a fence required around the pond?
No, there's not currently.
Go ahead, Anthony. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what is the advantage to the city to do this? I mean, what what do we kind of get out of it as such? I mean, do we, are we taking on responsibility for something that in the future might come back to us?
The advantage is, I guess I don't really consider it advantage, other than it's an effort to help more control or MS four program or stormwater inventory, even though everything's currently in private ownership, the city is allowed by ordinance, is required to monitor these ponds and everything such as this. I prefer having arrangements similar to this, so the responsibilities are clearly defined and whose roles and responsibilities are because we have various amounts of stormwater ponds. So it, and it was a request of this, of the owner of Lot Two because due to my understanding that the condition of them closing on that Lot Two, that they would have to assume all responsibilities of Outlot A, which is a stormwater pond, Outlot A, or by one particular property owner that serves this particular neighborhood, it's just in everybody's best interest, I suppose, to have an agreement such as this. And we just did one few, few weeks ago, that was in regards to a pond located just north Thrifty White, leaving that particular vicinity.
I could mention too, that the, that that pond there is actually, one, two, three, four, four or five lots in there. We were all assessed for that pond.
All right, if the, there's no more questions, we could bring this to the council on Monday night through a motion. Someone like offer that? Thank you, Justin.
All right.
Thank you, Jim. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next item is Pebble Lake Golf Course Wetland Delination.
Yes, thank you. Just recently, members from the municipal golf course, city staff and members of the Minnesota Board of Soil and Water, we recently met to discuss the ongoing golf course water issues that has consistently hindered the course use in operations for years, if not decades. Thus far, we've been speaking about water mitigation and drainage improvements to the course. However, a few of the course wetlands are required to be delineated, so the city does not violate any of the Wetland Conservation Act regulations with any pending set improvements. The delineation report will assist with a future dialogue in regards to identifying costs, effective course improvements in planning. This is recommended to be put, proposed to be funded through the American Rescue Fund, pending funds on that, or however it is an eligible expense for the Storm Sewer Enterprise Fund. So at this time, I'm requesting to initiate this golf course delineation drainage improvement project and accept Stan Tech Engineering Professional Services proposal for wetland delineation in amount of eight thousand fifty dollars. Now, are there any questions you might have?
Thanks, Brian. I just have a simple question. So I know Stan Tech, we have Moore, and how do we, how does the engineering department, do each of these engineering firms have specialties, if you will, or particular project, or how would you go about, just out of curiosity, how do you go about determining which is the best engineering firm for a project like this?
Well, good question. It's not more so an engine, to begin on some more in engineering, you have to, to do wetland delineations, you have to be certified with the state. There is a record account of who was certified under that program. There's not any particular ones local here that I'm aware of, did in the past, previously. We have worked with some other consultants, but based on the magnitude of this delineation and talking with some of the members at the time, it was just pressing to try to get this project going.
Okay, so it's just more of a certification and who's got the qualifications?
Yes, you have to be certified.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
I will offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Tom. Any further questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye. That motion carries. Item number three is City Project Five Nine Five Five, and again, we'll call on Brian Uvaro.
Thank you. Um, we're, this is memorized in regards to public improvement of Five Nine Five Five. This is the twenty 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 twenty-one street utility improvement project, looking to reconstruct Whitford Street in bankrupt area. The bid opening for has been set for Thursday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty at two PM in these council chambers. Similar to previous special assessed projects, we're proposing to hold the final assessment prior to awarding the bids. In order to fast track this project or based on the season that we have in limited time they're up to do construction, I'm requesting the city council set the final cost hearing date for June twenty twenty twenty. This is standard procedure per Minnesota statute. So at this time, your, your honor, I'm requesting recommendation to set the final cost hearing for June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one for combined project CP number Five Nine Five Five.
Thank you, Brian. We can do that by recommending that to the council. Thank you, Caroline. Brent, any questions of Brian? Yeah, Tom?
No, I was just doing this.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Yep, your honor. On the memorandum, I think it should say the bids are scheduled to open May twenty-five, twenty twenty-one.
Excuse me.
Yes, thank, thank you. We'll note that.
Thank you.
All right. And next is a pavement management overview.
And hopefully you guys don't find it something a little bit different today.
All right.
You can manage it, might not be most exciting topic for everybody. We'd like to try something a little bit. We're going to interview a friend.
He looks really excited.
Is there audience participation?
I don't know why that's so glittery in the air.
You gotta do all items and interview the interview.
What a day.
I want different voices for different.
Running the show today.
It's like the Oprah Lin free show.
Hi, welcome back to Lynn.
So Brian, as a city engineer, you're in charge of our city streets. We would like to thank you today for taking some time to ask and answer some of the most common questions the city gets regarding street conditions, repairs and funding. So many people have a perception that the roads of Fergus Falls are the worst anywhere. Is that true?
Well, I would disagree. As we know, living in Minnesota, our climate has some extreme temperature ranges. Sometimes it can be ninety-plus degrees in the summer, of course, and sometimes negative forty degrees. That's a huge fluctuation in temperature and as greatly impacts our roadways. People who drive in other states typically use that community's particular main roads to get into a destination for shopping and restaurants and services. It's common to find many of the main streets in most communities that are in better condition than a side street or a local street residential.
So if I was going to another city and I was visiting a relative that lived on a residential street, it's going to be likely that those streets are not in great shape either?
Yes, I would, it would be likely true for that community, our community and every community in the nation.
So what do all streets have in common?
Streets have limited life and eventually may be reduced. When you combine traffic volume, vehicle weight, weather and time, it equates to deterioration from heavy wear to. Proper maintenance can extend the useful life of road, but maintenance has its limitations. Eventually, all roads will need to be replaced.
So I found it interesting to learn, the city has approximately a hundred miles on our street system, which is the equivalent to driving to just outside of St. Cloud from Fergus Falls.
That's correct. We do have over a hundred mile, eight miles of roads in our system. I'd like the map shown right here to give you a representation of how much centerline feet we do have to maintain. We also have quite a few alleys and gravel roads too, the city must also maintain. Well, with this amount, the city, the city uses a number of strategies to tackle street projects such as crack, crack ceiling, pot hole, patching, repair, mill and overlay, seal coats and reconstruction. There are other techniques too, we're also looking at.
So we don't always think about streets as having a function, but they do. So can you tell us how and why streets are classified?
Well, we typically follow mid dots, mid dots hierarchy when they, what they call it, street functions, which are heavily determined by traffic volumes and the intent design of a roadway. Most of our streets are roadway, which, which includes our residential streets. Fergus Falls also has traffic entering and exiting our community through county stadium, road systems and the Trump Highway two-ten as another example, along with the interstate system. Collectors are the roads frequently used by those coming from outside the city limits. Additionally, we have miles of streets located within our industrial areas that are different in a manner that we not only have to maintain, but we have to design these heavier road sections due to the increased weight by them traveling on them.
All right. We often hear you refer to things as MSAS. Can you explain what exactly that means?
Yes, MSAS is an acronym for municipal state aid, municipal state aid street system. Their primary, the entrances and exits to our community, they have the highest traffic volume. These main roads are designated as, are also as their emergency routes and different sorts, funding sources are designated for the streets. Only state aid funds can be used on these particular routes and not on our local streets. As you can see from listing on the, this has some examples of our MSAS streets, municipal state aid. It's composed about twenty-five point eight miles, which represents about twenty percent of the city's overall system.
One of the biggest jobs the engineering department oversees is prior, prioritizing which project gets done and when.
Yes, the screen before you right here just shows you, gives you a brief snapshot, some decisions that we have to be taking into consideration when we prioritize these projects. Generally, we want to prevent the roads in fair condition from falling into the poor condition. We want to avoid the worst first scenario in order to maximize the benefit of available funds. We try to prioritize preservation or reconstruction, keep costs down. We typically review projects which have received maintenance and or reconstruction and identify a schedule for future maintenance, such as seal code, generally the first strategy we're going to use after reconstruction.
So Brian, can we talk about, into your decision-making process and talk about how the projects are prioritized?
Well, it's pretty brutal. First of all, we look at the street functional system as we just covered. We need, we look at the condition of the pavement, the site with strategy, this road qualifies and subsequently the funding sources. We then look at the age of pavement, how long it's been since the streets have had work on. From an engineering standpoint, we look at the number of factors like condition of the utilities below, which is a huge thing, I want to point out, especially from Otter Tail County and the city, same seat, but we have the utilities beneath, which is very significant. And then we have to identify if there's any safety or drainage improvements that should be made and if there's any unusual deterioration or other ways this road to be improved. We take all this information that counts, we do cost assessments and determine how how far we can go with this particular road based on the funding, funds we have.
Thank you. So a number of years ago, the city made a significant software investment to help record and rate each street's condition. Can you talk about that program a little bit?
Yes, the city uses an icon software system. This is, the Otter Tail County has a very similar system as well. It's essentially a large database that houses actual pavement deficiencies for each segment of street within the city's network. If then, with these deficiencies, a program assigns a street, a particular number, one through a hundred. It's called the Pavement Condition Act, PCI, Pavement Condition Index. This correlates to the condition of the street at a very aggregate, objective manner. It ranges, like mentioned, from one to a hundred, a hundred being best, if you review the screen, and zero being very poor, obviously non-existent, in my opinion, being the worst. We, we take this, we take the information the software provides and we plug it into our formulas to identify the amount of funding the city can put towards these streets. The system assists us also with identifying potential street candidates that we may be looking for a seal code or an overlay. However, I want to know, just like every computer program, we always send staff out and review the streets in the field to ensure that that it's showing us is somewhat actually accurate.
Okay.
Brian, Brian, I have a question.
Sure.
Who, who inputs that data? Do we have somebody go in and drive all of our roads or is that done by our people?
That's a good question. Every about, every four or five years, we hire, it's through mid nod, it's a, it's a fairly advanced band system with all this reporting data. So it actually will go drive every single street we have that we tell it to and it'll map all the deficiencies. And then that data is then uploaded into. Into that system. Okay, thanks. Correct.
Right.
Correct. So it's a, it's a huge amount of data.
And we've been collecting this data for a number of years and as you can see on the screen here, we've got the, the average conditions from two thousand seven, two thousand twelve and two thousand fifteen.
Yes, as you can see, this is in the simplest form, this is some of the data it provides for us in the city. It's, this number fluctuates, as Lynn mentioned, sometimes it can change due to the project being completed as a result. The PCI then has become, becomes a one hundred for that particular street segment. Oftentimes, like after a harsh freeze thaw cycle, a road being quality will lower condition. Even with good maintenance schedules, maintenance schedules, road surfaces will continue to deteriorate over time, thus lowering the PCI on individual roads, which will impact the overall system. So with this snapshot right here, we can actually do projections, which will be on another slide. But essentially, every time in the same program, when new data is entered, it is assigned a decaper, a decaper. That's its projection and how it correlates to how we can look out twenty, thirty years beyond and determine where we're going to be at perhaps in the future when it comes twenty, thirty years.
And that was a great segue to the next question is where are we at right now projected for two thousand twenty-one?
As mentioned, this is a projection. Our latest calculations show about twelve percent of our roads are being in very poor condition. Fourteen percent are bored, twenty aren't current mission, twenty-eight aren't good and twenty-six are considered excellent condition. The average PCI is sixty-one. So of all these numbers, if you look back, that is just your bare bone, the simple number of sixty-one is your overall composite number of what your street system may look like. I think I just wanted to note on this one, this was a projection based off the information we currently have in general, like in order, we do this actual survey every four or five years. We're all due for one coming up and I anticipate we're scheduling it for next year. Once that's the survey, all this data will be re-entered and recomputed. So we have a trending, trending line of all our city's street network.
So Brian, so the, the, is this twenty twenty-one number, when's the data collected? My question is this, like if you look at twenty fifteen, we're at a seventy-three and then twenty twenty-one, you're at five years or six years later, you're at a sixty-one and we've have significant increases in our road maintenance funding since that time? So I'm just wondering when the data is collected and then is it just that the, you know, the money that we're spending is not going as far or, you know, if we're increasing our funding and we're, you know, still maybe slipping on the average quality of the streets, is it just something that the council should look at, so?
Well, it's a good question. As I mentioned, we haven't done it, done this particular survey and uploaded data every four or five years. It costs approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to do it.
Sure.
So I, my opinion, we do these projections, we do these projects and everything, and I had mentioned this about time. So get a real more accurate account, like I mentioned.
Sure.
Data will then have the actual current, most current data instead of projections and then we can better understand. And that's the whole intent is number one, is housing all the data and seeing over time what the system is doing.
So that number really is a projection from four or five years ago before we increase that funding, really. So it'd be interesting to see what that funding, it actually would be very useful to see what that funding increases does. Okay.
It might be a slide coming.
You started the presentation or the interview with kind of the main throw bears that are used and those are predominantly in better condition than residential streets. Is there a way, I'm just curious, is there a way the segment, the hundred miles we have that are main throw bears and what condition those are in? I'm assuming we probably don't have any of those in twelve or fourteen percent, but is there a way to, and I'm assuming those are all in the green and blue, probably? Not necessarily, but yes, there is a way with, just like any software program, it has input parameters and this particular program, we have it assigned where they're municipal state aid routes or your local ones. As mentioned, it's ongoing and everything, it has that capabilities, but I would have to review all those to make sure, because we make changes in our state aid system. I believe last council or something revoked a few mileage and everything, so everything's very fluid. So it has that capability. I don't have that right. I just think it'd be nice to, the main road that were highly traveled and makes sense that it should be in better condition, makes sense that we'd be able to pull that, make sure they're in good condition compared to some of the off streets.
Jim?
That twelve percent that's bad, if we fix all that up to a hundred percent, what difference is that going to make in our number? Will that raise, raise the sixty-one because you still got the other roads that are slowly deteriorating? We fix that, that twelve percent, well, the fourteen percent might move up.
The fourteen, yeah, naturally all, I would anticipate some of these numbers, as mentioned, everything in the program's running in natural decaper. When you do a maintenance, it will boost up the PCI, then go like this, you know, it covers some I didn't want to, I would have, but Lynn didn't want me to, and they're going too much.
So actually, I'm here.
Every time you do these, yes, you're increasing the hundred percent or bringing that PCI up and that's going to naturally fall off. So I'm consistent, if we reconstruct, I'll see you're right. These, these other roads are still going to deteriorate. Those numbers are going to, you know, it's just a, I shift rates are going to shift. But I would agree that it would fall into that order.
It's just a merry-go-round.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question about a phrase on a few slides back? I was going to wait till the end, but everybody else asked the question. You said that you wanted to avoid the worst first approach? Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Well, if, if we could kind of get more of those slides, we understand there are some absolutely terrible roads. With, with some of the funding sources we have, such as mill and overlay, seal codes or, we cannot just overlay these projects just because of the amount of reflective cracking and everything. I always say it's going to, it's going to look like in two years from now, we like the same, street will look the same, same price or a little bit darker, Jim. So you're throwing essentially good money at that.
Sure.
As we get a slide and that's what we're going to introduce, there's some other, there's other advanced techniques. Now, for roads like that, those really worse roads, those are the ones that gets biggest headache because if we're going to make an investment, you know, reconstructing the whole pavement structure, we have to have some security of what the underlying terms are.
Yeah.
Even though there's risk.
Yep.
As all, but barring, we don't have to have any utility issues or that. There's other techniques such as reclamation that we can talk about and do where you're essentially grinding out the entire pavement, getting rid of reflective cracking, everything, then have paving new section over it. A lot more upfront costs, however, if you look at your rate of return over thirty years and your maintenance costs, it's very compelling.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So next we want to show you some examples of those common street conditions that we find and what those conditions generally mean for the overall health of the streets and hoping technology works because.
While intuition.
Video clip to show you.
Is that the one she'll read?
Intuition may tell us. While intuition may tell us roads are solid and immovable, that's not really the case. Every road is impacted by each vehicle that passes over it. Pavement is a consumable. It's consumed primarily by the vehicles that all of us drive. The more vehicles using a road, the shorter the life of the pavement.
Here's a cross-section of a typical pavement. The weight of each vehicle bends the pavement slightly. This gauge measures the amount of bending or deflection caused by the weight of a vehicle. As the truck approaches, notice that the gauge first swings to the right. That means the road surface actually moved upward a small amount in a ripple effect caused by the approaching tire. Now we'll restart the action. The gauge swings to the left as the truck moves over the pavement. That means the pavement is being deflected downward. After the truck passes, the pavement rebounds to its original position. Roads have their greatest strength in the winter. The water trapped in the base and subgrade is frozen solid, adding to the strength of the pavement. Then in the spring, the base and subgrade begin to thaw out and our pavements become much more vulnerable. When the air temperature reaches about thirty-five to forty degrees for several days in a row, we have a layer of soggy, waterlogged base material under. we have a layer of soggy, waterlogged base material under the paved surface. When a loaded truck comes along, it's easy to see what's going to happen. With reduced support from the underlying materials, the surface layer deflects more and wears out faster. We're all familiar with the result, pothole season.
All right, so the first street condition we're gonna look at is alligator cracks.
Yes, this is what we've kind of referred to alligator crack, fatigue cracks. These are over general where fatigue streets have deteriorated and they often have a bad sub attributed to a bad subgrade, which allows excessive flex, like we kind of noted in the previous video. This this is usually exacerbated with heavy traffic. We attempt not to overlay on alligator cracks such as this that we spoke about. But we tried on these two areas, we gotta take more in-depth look. We did not want to throw good money at it. Just like we spoke about, we simply have to take a little bit more, since it rolls like this, which we have plenty of them. But generally in our mill and overlay projects, where we're just milling off, that we'll talk a little more. We'll do some full depth patches in these particular areas prior to overlay. Pass a little bit more, but these are some of the strategies we try to do to address some of these streets. However, as we know, we have some of these streets that last for blocks and blocks. That's where we speak, we gotta look at reclamation potentially.
All right, another example, something we often see is cracks in the road.
Yes, other than the fatigue cracks, cracks in the roads, such as this are common as well. In general, these are as a result of thermal expansion and eventually once cracks widen in the winter months, water intrusion occurs. The water expands and the cracks widen in the cold weather. Additionally, in conjunction with the water, we also get what we call incompressible materials. It's like sands that get into these cracks during these winter months. Subsequently, in the summer, summer months, the road comes back, contracts due to thermal expansion. And now we have these uncompressible materials such as sands. These sands in these joints now is what we call internal pressures. That just distresses those cracks even more. When you see our city crews out in a crack filling, they're trying to improve these roads by filling these cracks to keep A, we try to try to keep them watertight per se and generally keep these incompressible materials, all of these cracks.
All right, now this might be a little bit corny, but we want to keep your interest up in pavement management here. So we have a little story, little fun fact, that sometimes the conditions of the street actually make interesting new stories. So if anyone was following the story last year out of Sioux Falls, there was a cornstalk that was growing in a distressed street. And until someone vandalized it and pulled it out, it was kind of a social media help following. It was Sioux Falls area, but a cornstalk growing in the street. We just wanted to show you pavement management can be fun.
Yes, when they fill those cracks, do they, do they actually try and blow the sand and stuff out of those before they're filled or?
They're very, yeah, last it was there as a general practice and everything, you know, or you do route seal as well. It depends on what type of rubberized compound you're using. There's all different kinds of variations as well, but in general, that's what we're trying to tend to do.
Okay.
So another common and probably one of the most frequently reported problems to the city that we get is potholes. And we do want people to report those to us so that we are aware of, especially the big ones, that we can stay on top of those. But we did see a little video here about how potholes are formed, but.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to know, we're talking about alligator cracks, transverse cracks, potholes. We out, well, there's a lot more just, you know, that there's to do that we can learn. These are just some of the basic ones that mention all communities. Yeah, potholes, just like in that video, are repeated wearing tear on a road. They're often exacerbated and it's going by large trucks that continues to break up material until they finally crack and leave a crater in the path. We often send crews out for the two patches of potholes to ensure safety for cars, pedestrians and vehicle trucks. So many potholes can create.
And we have another little quick video.
Small cracks form first on the bottom of the asphalt because that gets stretched the most. As the asphalt is fatigued, cracks also form on the top surface. Now, water on the pavement from rain or melted snow gets into the cracks. When the temperature drops, the water freezes and expands, making the cracks deeper and wider. With more precipitation, more freeze thaw cycles and the continued vehicle loading, sooner or later, the cracks go all the way through the pavement. Now, water can get underneath the surface. When this subsurface water freezes and expands, it pushes the pavement up and weakens it even more. When the ice melts and contracts, it leaves a space, so we have a weakened pavement layer over a cavity. All that's needed now is a good sized vehicle and there's your pothole.
All right, so we're gonna get back to the mayor's question here. With the limited number of amount of funding available each year, how do you decide which projects to undertake?
Well, the project for street project begins at the city's budget process, request for the tax levying committee and ultimately to say city council approval. The engineering department looks closely at the amount of funding that is allocated and determines what's the most cost effective solution. Again, with over a hundred miles of roadway within the state limits, it's hard to maintain, much less improve all whole street conditions for a short period of time. We continually monitor the projected availability of federal and state aid funds that may be applied to our local system. Our local system maximizes the benefit of these dollars. Just noted too, there's, we're gonna talk about what's levied and with our state aid funds that we can allocate to from the state government.
Okay, so the next slide shows just this graphic of what the city has set aside for residential area projects just last year, put it based in.
Yeah, we have, we have budgeted and here's our, here's a recap of previous years and how the city council has taken actions to increase. We have budgeted approximately a hundred and three thousand dollars for free benefit maintenance and seal codes. And nearly a quarter million dollars budgeted for mill and overlay projects. These projects are paid from the global tax dollar levy dollars and this funding is calculated separate from major reconstruction projects.
So let's look at how this compares to previous city budgets for street improvements.
As you can see, the city began making significant increases to our city project budget in twenty sixteen. As we know, our residents want the city to invest in our streets and our elected officials have responded with allocating more additional funding to street improvements.
So if we had unlimited funds, what could we do with streets?
Now, this luxury here is just a typical, we'll call the ideal preservation that we'd like to look at. Showing the improvement on the roadway, how, where do we get over its lifetime if we have limited funds? As you can see, all roads have limited lifespan. We work hard at preventing maintenance on projects rather than waiting until they're the worst. How often on roadway would we need to get a seal code and mill and overlay treatments to keep them in excellent condition for forty year life cycle? If we were limited funds such as this right here, just to show, you know, we would typically try to seal code in three, three years. Then year six, year nine, and then maybe year fifteen, mill and overlay. Cost standpoint, to other communities. I'm not aware of any community that has these ideal funds or conditions, but for best case, this was what we'd like to do.
That's a good question. Can you go back one slide, Claire, is that easy enough to do? So if you look at the, you know, the ninety thousand dollars in seal code and a hundred thousand in mill and overlay versus obviously considerably more in twenty twenty. Do we have an idea of like how many like cost of materials, inflation, cost of art, all that, all those things, considerations that go in to tell us like that? You know, that hundred, two hundred, two hundred fifty percent increase from two thousand twelve. What's that getting us? Is it keeping up with the cost, these costs? So mile per mile, are we, what, what are we doing? And I'm not expecting that this morning at all, but just as we go into the twenty twenty one budget or twenty twenty two budget cycle, just so we can, we can know the money that we're investing, what we're actually getting as compared to, because it's a significant increase in funding. And are we seeing the results or do we need to even look at possibly increasing that more? So anyway, not a question.
Answer that and I don't know particularly too much detail, but it is generally providing this increase. I'll do two or three more additional blocks.
Got it.
And then mill and overlay.
Okay.
Yes, and prices are very volatile and have been a major component of Timas pricing. That has been pretty level. Your past was much more so, it has been down. But in general, yeah, it has been providing a couple like two extra block or two.
Okay, thank you.
So now we're just gonna review what exactly it means when we face poor, what is a chip seal?
Yeah, here's, here's one of our typical strategies. Chip sealing is a pavement, is a surface treatment, it's not a structural. It's a surface treatment that we essentially combine, lay down a layer of asphalt oil. And then we then apply with the self propelled machine there, this is called a fine area chip spreader. This maintains, once this process is done, it's a very fast moving project, very typical. We, once the chips are down on the rocks, we wait typically about four years, natural traffic to help adhere the material and then we sweep them up. We spend about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar on this treatment annually. It lasts about seven years, but once again, factors such as traffic, weather conditions and how well it is maintained could affect the timeline. When we do a chip seal, we're not fixing utilities to hold the surface.
All right, so let's talk about how that compares to a mill and overlay project.
Mill and overlays generally consists of two steps. So we take a bill, you know, well for this, but generally the major two steps is we're milling the street surface off, which we have two inches. Once that surface removed, then maybe replace it with a new layer of asphalt material, generally the same thickness, one or two inches. We spend nearly a quarter million dollars on these projects every year. These projects are meant not meant to fix utilities once again, but sometimes we do repair no issues when we mentioned isolated fatigue cracked areas in the base sections. I also want to point out the mill and overlay work that is done annually. Our prioritization, it's alternates by city ward. As you can see on the rotation where we have in twenty twenty one, we're looking for four, twenty twenty, ward one, twenty nineteen, ward three, twenty eighteen, ward two. That's our first step in prioritizing mill and overlays in the city. Yes.
Could we, could we amend that so that ward two gets like every other year?
It's not, it's the city council, we'd like to.
Think we can do that.
So in addition to the annual maintenance work, the city's always planning for and undertaking large reconstruction projects like we just talked about earlier in the meeting today.
Yes, so we undertake large scale projects, not only the six street surface, but the failing infrastructure of the street. These projects are not funded by the city levy dollars, I would type them up, previously type of mill and overlay. They're generally funded through special assessments or a portion there over the road. If we cannot keep up with the street services, you, the underground utilities can have, cannot, can last up to ten years. However, there's no guarantee, like I mentioned, utility failures can happen even on new streets. There's always a high risk that a brand new street can develop potholes shortly after construction.
And we're gonna go back to that perception that we have the worst roads in the whole world. We have some very, very nice streets that are popping up because of the recent progress that council has approved as well. Summit Burlington Highland is our most recent projects that we just finished up.
These are side by side comparisons, I particularly, this is a East Mount Faith, just, excuse me, East driver. Many of these large scale products are planned for years in advance of the project. We must follow a state process, the state's actually towards one line. If, if that the factors are gonna be assessed for a portion of their street, this is very similar to that craft in Winford. We use, we sign a portion just of the street, however, taxpayers' water sewer funds, portion of their annual bill, their bill, monthly bill goes into our funds that it helps replace our water sewer when we're doing these reconstruction projects. So other than the street to city, the city is covering, paying for those costs to do these utility reconstruction projects and just assessing a big portion of the street to a letting presence.
What a great segue. Are there any other ways to pay for street improvements?
Well, we, we are considering implementing franchise fees, which requires ordinance dedicated to spending a hundred percent of the funds on street projects. This would take place with Great Plains National Gas and Otterdale Power Company. Although this additional funding source is still in sympathy for the city, a portion of these funds could supplement mill and overlay projects, doing more with these more blocks and seal codes. They could fund more extensive pavement reconstruction techniques such as a full depth reclamation and minimize or eliminate the need for specialty assessment, special assessments for reconstruction projects that we just spoke about.
So Frank, we have covered a lot of ground for roadway today. But we just like to summarize at the last with the three points of the, the main points of the whole presentation day is streets do have a limited lifespan. It's a process in place to determine what the most pressing needs are. And third, the city does work hard to find the most economical solution that benefits the taxpayers and our residents. So are there any questions for Brian, Brian Orwood?
Brian, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Go ahead, Anthony.
I, well, it's, it's kind of equally to the city council too. I mean, I get a lot of calls, obviously, on street condition. And, and I think, you know, one of the things that would go a long way is as we look to spend three plus million dollars on the downtown riverfront, you know, of taxpayer money, that, that benefits, you know, technically, yes, it benefits everybody, but it, it really doesn't. There's a lot of, a lot of residents that will not go down there and will not use that and will not use it on a daily basis. The city has, you know, quite a lot of physical, you know, fiscal funds. You know, what, what would happen if we took, say, like a million dollars and actually got ahead of the curve? Because, as you say, you're, you're looking at a preventive maintenance program by, and you're always gonna have one street, you know, as, as much as you repair, you know, this ten miles, there's another ten miles that obviously just slips every, every, every year, you know, ten miles slip into the next condition. But if we actually threw some money at it, it actually fixed a lot of the roads, you know, because you know, when you walk around town, you know, yes, we can say, you know, we're not alone, but you know, we're trying to differentiate ourselves. So do we really want to be in the same category as Morehead with bad roads or with Grand Rapids with bad roads? You know, and I, I just think that we need to, you know, as much as we spend money on recreational things, we need to, you know, we need to spend some money on infrastructure and take some of the money we have and actually get ahead of it. Get ahead. I mean, what would a million dollars do for you, Brian, in terms of, because we're playing catch up to a certain extent? And, and you never get ahead unless you actually throw some real money at it and actually, you know, put, put some effort to get, get us beyond where we're at today.
Thanks, Anthony. I, I know that the American Rescue Funds are obviously one, one of the projects, one of the areas we're looking at is infrastructure. I think that's one thing that, that we're gonna be looking at for twenty twenty two. So, yeah, I mean, I think Anthony's question is a good one. What, what, what would a significant, you know, one time shot? We have one time monies if, if, if the council ultimately will need to decide how those monies are, are spent. So infrastructure is definitely one of those, those areas. So maybe, maybe that's something you could bring back at some point, what, you know, if, what's a million dollars, what's five hundred thousand, what's two million dollars? Just what does that do to the overall curve, if you will, of the, where we're at in the, in the game? Thanks, Brian.
If I can answer that, you know, kind of, of course, you know, more allocation of funds would help out. I guess it, it's the cities. How, how they view the system or what they want it to be. I know, for example, in the backs of the site on pavement management system, there's very techniques in what, how you want a program to maintain your system. I believe the city of Bloomington, number one, not to mention they have two staff members that have fully dedicated this particular program. But they, they set their threshold, they want some minimum PCI of, I think it's on sixty five, sixty five, seventy two, I won't record it. And then that number there, that looks back to system and determines how much funds they're gonna need to identify those needs. So it's a matter of what you want your system to have.
Yeah, but I think a point to that, no matter, we could set that management at eighty, which would, you know, be a significant increase. But we're still going to have some of those roads in the, you know.
You're gonna have those amount of roads and you're gonna have some significant costs. And like I mentioned, it's all how much you want to borrow at one time with a street reconstruction bond. We have a lot of sources and everything to use on this fund, but taxpayers are paying for it, so.
Sure.
It's how we wanna prioritize.
In that same vein, one number that would be interesting to know. Pretend that you are the Santa Claus of asphalt and you could, you could wave your magic wand and spend an unlimited amount of money to make our roads just buttery smooth. What, and, and of course, not right now, but I mean, at some point, it'd be nice to know what would it take? What kind of investment would it take to bring all of our roads up to what people who call me want?
For Bill's.
Bill, plug your ears. It would just be, I mean, if it, you know, if you could say, okay, well, it's gonna take, you know, if, if we, if all the, if you want all the streets, you know, just smooth, it's gonna take thirty million dollars or whatever that number is, it would just be interesting. Do you have a ballpark idea of what that would take?
No, I'm not gonna. Well, you mentioned, I, you know, uh, it, it, the difficult part is the utilities.
Yeah.
There's going to be risks if we did have the utilities beneath the streets, but that's a huge factor we gotta look into. So if we're going along the same lines, you know, just starting out for the streets, we gotta take account of how much we're gonna replace the utilities, which is another feature of yourself.
And then on top of that, it would be to your perfect world scenario, whatever the budget, what's the, assuming we make that infrastructure investment, what is it to maintain that entire system yearly? And I would imagine our current budget is even enough to maintain that. So then we're gonna get back to the same efficiencies at some point. That'd be curious to me, if we're gonna guess the number, what would it be to get it up to that percentage? Then what do we need to commit to maintain? Because last thing you wanna do is.
Build it all.
Build it all and then a fall.
And then you have a huge influx, so I want to.
Every year.
At the same.
Good point, yeah, very good point.
And the other thing is, if you had all that money, it isn't going to get done instantaneously. It's gonna be years to put all that together. So you're still behind the eight ball.
Yes, from a logistical standpoint, everything, still have to meet traffic and access and everything and in a safe manner. So you're, you're absolutely right, we have to take that into consideration too.
One, a quick, quick question for Brian. So, so on a scale from one to ten, where ten is the, the, the perfect environment to maintain streets as far as climate and one being just, you know, the most challenging freestyle, freestyle, whatever, where would you put Fergus on that scale? Just to give people an idea what we're up against.
We're in perhaps one of the worst climates.
Okay, so we're in about the worst climate you can try to maintain a road in.
Yeah, that's, and that's not necessarily climate too, you know, uh, Park of War is a prime example as well. It's not necessarily just the climate, it's the underlying soil.
Sure, okay.
Place.
Yeah.
We have predominantly clay materials around here too. Uh, those expansions, vertical expansions, everything, that's why we'd like to try to have gravel, you know, to do these projects. But, yeah, we, yeah, I would no doubt say that.
Okay.
From ranges ninety, you know, to, that's a huge.
Yeah.
Huge range of, just like concrete materials, every material's there, that's a huge expansion.
So that'll be good for people to know too, that we could never pick the worst place to try to build roads.
Well, take the pace and working with Mendon too, though, there is, there is, we, through research and everything, there are performance-grade asphalt materials, albeit expensive, more expensive. The asphalt oils that go into our sewage material, it's kind of designed, but even those are, you know, have a hard time meeting those thermal ranges, so eventually when we get our cracks. So one thing guaranteed, we're always getting cracks.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, just a man.
Thank you.
Andrew, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a few comments. Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, thanks, Brian and Lynn, that was very, I think, informative. Clara, yes, absolutely, very informative and helpful, and I think the Santa Claus of roads may stick, Brian, so. So anyway, um, you know, this is great information, obviously, we have needs and we wanna put this problem or information into action. And Brian touched on it a little bit and Lynn with franchise fees, but that's what we're really hoping this discussion brings about is, um, we'd like to put on the agenda for Monday night, um, a resolution directing staff to begin working with Otter Tail Power in Great Plains to explore implementation of franchise fees. What that is, is charging those companies a fee to operate and use the city's right-of-ways. It's a very common practice, especially in the metro area, a ton of cities have this. All of the funds that would be raised as part of this franchise fee, as they mentioned, would be dedicated to road maintenance and reconstruction. Hundred percent of them. So having that long-term dedicated funding source, which can complement the tax levy dollars that we're trying to continuously increase incrementally, um, would really allow us to go further. So I think that's a much better approach than a one-time shot in the arm because we will always be chasing. And like Brian said, if we do a large segment of town at once, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, you gotta find that same one-time investment to try to keep ahead of all those roads. So having the, the, um, dedicated funding source that can generate the revenue that we need and we can identify what that revenue is and you set that fee accordingly and that can be adjusted from time to time will allow us to have the stability that we need, not to get the, this PCI to a hundred, but to continue to, to be, or get it further ahead of the curve, knowing that that curve's always gonna continue. Um, and, uh, you know, I think it's important to focus on infrastructure, like, like Anthony said, that's absolutely a vital part of any community. But I don't think we wanna get bogged down in only spending city dollars on streets because at the end of the day, we still won't hit a hundred, we're still gonna have the same challenges and we haven't moved forward in any other place of our community. So that's why staff really feels like this is the right direction to go. And, uh, you know, I think the information's there, I think it's very evident that we have to do more and we have to do something. And that's what the community wants, quite frankly. So, um, in my mind, this is a logical next step to have these conversations. It's a little bit of a process to get these in place, so it's not like you're approving anything, uh, Monday night. It would just be to start those discussions with Otter Tail and Great Plains. Like Brian mentioned, it's an ordinance process, there's some, uh, work that has to be done through the PUC and others. So it'll take some time, but that's, that's the outcome we're hoping for and hopefully the council's on board with that, uh, continued investment in our streets.
Yeah, and I guess we'll continue this discussion Monday night. Uh, any final thoughts before we wrap up?
When we do, I hear this often from animal covers or whatever the case may be, when we do a new street and we still have this deep cover and it seems to be a pothole, can you, or maybe Monday night, speak about, you know, what that process looks like or bring it up or why we don't or how, how that, you know, is it too expensive or is that, how's that work? Because I know we've got some nice streets and maybe there's a reason why you don't want the animal cover level with the road. But I get questions often on that, so.
We generally try to maintain a quarter to three it's when we do reconstruction projects. But, yeah, we can talk. And that, but, yeah, it is our, one of them slightly lower than the pavement surface. You don't want plow catches and everything, yeah, we have some and, yeah, we can look at, uh, name a few manuals, probably to look at better and see what we can do to raise those, replace adjustment rigs beneath the gas and they're sitting on top of the structure. And, uh, bring up aside.
That's a huge expense, it's just more doing it.
It, it can, it's considered part of a maintenance program, they're always frustrating, they're always moving. Yes, there are some lower and everything, we're aware of that and, you know, maybe we just gotta start prioritizing some laws as well in a maintenance. Not doing all of them, but start.
I just hear that because some of them are worse than just potholes themselves, but.
All right, thank you, Brian, thank you, Lynn, thank you, Clara, Andrew, staff. And we will continue this discussion by night. And with that, we're adjourned.